Heard that, okay, very good. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of May 15, 2023. In accordance with L.B. 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is exciting.
Well, yeah, thank you, Councilman Shob. The order of business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on any item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to testify, to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be represented by such person or such group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of that individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, and the group, whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to that item. Testimony is listed, is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Okay, our first item of business today for our city council meeting Monday, May 15th, reminder that we will not be meeting on Monday, May 29th due to the observance of Memorial holiday. Next item of business is our consent agenda, sections one through three.
Is there anyone present to testify on the consent, consent agenda items one through three? Items one, two, and three, is anyone present to testify on these items? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
We cannot vote on these items. I'll be calling item 1A, reappoint Nicolette Siegfried to the personnel board for a term to expire June 22nd, 2028, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckeas, further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall now move on to section four of public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling item 4A, application of Sidecar Cider LLC doing business as cereal cider for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet at the Haymarket Farmers Market at 7th Street and P Street on May 20th and 27th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., June 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., July 1st, 8:15, 22nd, 29th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., August 5th, 12th, 9th, and 26th from 8 to 12:00 p.m., September 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and October 7th and 14th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Is there anyone present to testify on this item? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Tracy Sanford. I live at 2829 South 24th Street in Lincoln, and I am one of the owners of Cereal Cider.
Thank you, Tracy, for being here. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about your application today?
Here, answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions for our applicant?
Come in.
Any questions, all right, seeing none? Thank you again for being here. Very good, okay. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 4A. Anyone else present to testify on item 4A? Please come forward.
Second chair.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of item 4A.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Okay, that concludes section four of our agenda. Section five is our public hearing resolutions. I'll be calling item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April 16th through the 30th, 2023.
Is there anyone present to testify on this item? Item 5A, pending claims. Anyone present on this item? Okay, all right, seeing none, madam clerk, please move us on.
Go ahead, and I'll call item 5B, approving a letter agreement between the city of Lincoln and the Lincoln Firefighters Association, Local 644, amending the 2021-23 collective bargaining agreement regarding captain's promotional process.
Yep, this is an annual agreement we do that reflects just changing the dates so we can hold the captain promotional process for the fire department again. So it's the standard language. Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara McIntyre, Human Resources Director, 555 South 10th Street.
Thank you, Director McIntyre. Are there any questions for Director McIntyre? Any questions, okay, thank you very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5B, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
We cannot vote on these items. Item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April 16th through April 30th, 2023, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckeas, further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item 5B, approving a letter agreement between the city of Lincoln and the Lincoln Firefighters Association, Local 644, amending the 21-23 collective bargaining agreement regarding captain's promotional process, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Okay, that concludes section five of our public hearing resolutions. We'll move on to section six, ordinances third reading and related resolutions. Item 6A, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city of Lincoln and EADO LLC for the sale of city-owned property generally located at Antelope Valley Parkway and N Street, introduced by Beckeas.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item 6B, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned the pay range prefects by the letter A by creating the classification of traffic networking specialists, introduced by Beckeas.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item 6C is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefects by C by changing the range from Class 3, 3655, Licensed Practical Nurse, from C11 to C21, and for the Class 5118, Lead Mechanic, from C26 to C29, introduced by Beckeas.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington, further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item 6D is adopting the supplement of the Lincoln Municipal Code dated June 2022 and December 2022 as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code, introduced by Beckeas.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Shob, further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item 6E is approving a real property agreement with the West Haymarket JPA for transfers of real property generally located at 7th and N Streets to facilitate redevelopment of property known as Block 5, introduced by Beckeas.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Bowers, further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item 6F, amending the vendor trucks ordinance governing vendor trucks in the public roadways of the city, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckeas, and colleagues, I would like to move to substitute item 2365 with motion to amend number one.
Second.
Seconded again by Beckeas, thank you very much, councilman. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, could we please take the vote on the motion to amend?
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
Back to the main motion.
Main motion, Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
All right, thank you.
That concludes section six of our agenda. Section seven is our pending list, items 7A through 7D.
All right, that concludes the first meeting.
We can call for adjournment.
Pardon?
We can call for adjournment.
Yes, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Beckeas, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
We are adjourned.
Now the fun begins.[903.82]
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise. Prepare your post colors. Repeat. Up, just. Three, then, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Up, just. Order, march.
You all can go ahead and take your seats. Here we go. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska and that I will faithfully and truthfully discharge the duties of the office of city mayor according to law and to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Now make sure you look good, okay? Hold on. Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska and that I will faithfully and truthfully discharge the duties of the office of city council in and for Lincoln, Nebraska according to law and to the best of my ability. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone. We're going to take a short break so we can get everyone situated and make sure our microphones are working. So if you'd like to take a seat and get settled in for a few minutes, then we'll start our second agenda. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your patience. First, on our agenda here with our new city council, we will have the election of chairs.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is my privilege as mayor to call to order this first full meeting of our new city council. And the first order of business, as Madam Clerk has shared, is to elect a new council chair. So at this time, I would like to open up the floor for a nomination.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I nominate Councilwoman Tom Beckius as chair.
Are there... Is there a second for that nomination?
I'll second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I would ask for the clerk to please call the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Weber. Weber, I'm so sorry. Of course I would do that.
Yes.
I was so nervous. I'm sorry. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. With that, I would like to hand the gavel to our new chair.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask for a call for a nomination for vice chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take this opportunity to nominate Sandra Washington as vice chair of the Lincoln City Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Any other nominations? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Congratulations. Very good. Madam Chair, could you move... or Madam Clerk, could you move us forward?
Okay. Next on our agenda would be our consent agenda. I'll be calling item 1A, expressing appreciation of Tammy Ward for her service to the city as a member of the city council.
Would the honor roll Tammy Ward please come up to the microphone? Tam... Tam... Tammy, we love you. We wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and thank you for not only your four years of service on the Lincoln City Council, but your decades of service to public service throughout the years, whether it be in the governor's office or the mayor's office or anywhere and everywhere in between. So we are eternally grateful for the service you've given to the city of Lincoln and for the camaraderie and friendship that you have given to members of this council and members of a previous council as well. So we will miss you dearly. We are excited, however, for the things that are yet to come and look forward to continuing our relationship with you in the future. So with that, I know that there are a few council members that want to say a few other words, and I would like to give them the opportunity to do so.
Councilwoman Ward, Councilwoman Ward, pardon me. Tammy, it's been a pleasure serving with you and as someone who's also had federal service, I want to thank you for your federal service, your state service, your local service. I know how much it takes, how much a person gives when they serve in so many different capacities. And to move from behind the scenes to out in front as the policymaker was a big step. And you benefited the city of Lincoln very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Weber?
Thank you, Chair. Councilwoman Ward. I just want to express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for your service to the Lincoln City Council. For the past four years, you've been a tireless advocate for the residents of Northwest Lincoln. You've worked diligently to improve the quality of life in our community. Your leadership, your passion, your commitment has not gone unnoticed. And we are so grateful for the time and effort that you've given to making Lincoln a better place. You've been a role model for so many, especially myself. And your legacy of leadership will continue to inspire the future generations of public servants. You know, as someone who's grown up in the Highlands and, you know, played on the ballparks of Belmont, I feel so lucky to be the next voice for Northwest Lincoln on this city council. But I also know that I have big shoes to fill. And I feel so lucky and fortunate to follow in your path of serving others for Northwest Lincoln. So on behalf of Northwest Lincoln, our district, and the entire city, I just want to thank you for your service, for your selfless service, and for showing, you know, a lot of us, including myself, what public service should look like. I'm excited to see what's next and wish you all the best in your future endeavors and plan on reaching out quite a bit as I get into this position. But thank you so much for everything you've done for our city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Councilman Bowers?
Tammy. You've been my North Lincoln partner for the past four years, and I feel like that we've developed a really strong, unique connection. No other person has framed me or formed me as the elected official that I am today. You've taught me how to represent my values, constituents, and how to get things done. And both professionally and personally, you've always been in my corner. And words can never say thank you enough. I'm the official that I am today because of you. And if I had to kind of sum up three things that I've learned from you over the past four years, it's power, grace, and wisdom. When it comes to power, especially when I first got elected, I would ask you questions and be like, is it normal if I do this or is it okay if I do this? And you would say, you're the councilman. You're the elected official. You helped give me confidence in order to hit the ground running. And I've benefited so much from that confidence and from that strength. In addition, when it comes to asking questions or having some hard conversations with people or pushing a policy and not taking guff from other people, you've taught me how to have a strong backbone and how to have a spine and how to accomplish great things in this unique role that we're in. But the second thing with grace, taught me the power of relationships and building bridges. There have been so many times that I've given you a call because I was frustrated, angry, upset at either an individual or a group, and I just had to vent. And you've taught me about how it's important to sometimes let the little things go and to not things... take things personally and how to extend grace to other people. I've been the benefactor of your grace from even some of our own heated conversations that we have had in the past. But you've role modeled that for me well and taught me that it's important to build those relationships with people and how to effect change in those relationships. And then the third thing was with wisdom, to know when to use strength and power and to know when to use grace. You have constantly provided guidance, an example, and a mentor to me. From leading on controversial issues and how to conduct myself as an elected official, you've been able to show me and mentor me in very specific ways. One thing that comes up on top of my head is when I first became chair, I was nervous about running my first meeting. And I said, can we practice this out? You dropped everything. We went into your office and we role played how to hold a meeting. Going in to have some hard conversations with people, we've talked about what questions we can ask, how do we do this, and how do we do this in a diplomatic way? You've always been in my corner, and I don't know how I'm going to do this without you. Thank you for your service to the city, North Lincoln, and thank you for your service to me, Tammy. I appreciate it, and I love you.
Tammy Ward, we have some appreciation for you here today, not only for your service on the Lincoln City Council, but also as your time as chair for the Lincoln City Council as well. We thank you again. Thank you very much. And I know you'd probably like to say a few words, and I wanted to give you that opportunity to do so now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleagues and friends, because I believe you are all my friends that I've made over the last four years. Despite our moments of disagreement from time to time, we still always remain friends. And to the new members, congratulations, and you're going to do great. And it's such an opportunity and honor, and I'm excited to watch, and I'm just thrilled for all of you. And so I just want to say thanks again for everyone's patience and perseverance the last four years, despite being the council of COVID. I am really proud of the many things we got accomplished, and it was hard. And most of you were there the whole time. And I'm really proud during really difficult times. And I won't go through all the things that we struggled through and how to meet and when to meet and how to do it. But we managed and we kept people safe. And that's... We had no chart for that. And I don't know... Yeah, she still is here, the mayor. Thank you for your leadership as well during very, very difficult times. And I'm really proud of what we could all accomplish together. And the ordinances that we could introduce, Councilman Bowers and I had a few ordinances during the COVID that we felt helped our community. And those expired last week with the public health declared emergency that also expired. So I feel really proud of those kinds of things that we did. And so I don't want to take a lot of your time because you need to eat cake and celebrate today. But I do want to thank my family for being here, the some that could. I have my sister Pat here from Geneva, my niece Laura from Lincoln, and my great nephew Franklin, and my great niece Calliope, who got to get out of school a little early today. And I said, well, I'm going off the council. I'm not going on. But nonetheless, I really appreciate all the love and support. This is... I'm not really that emotional, but it's been a journey. And so thank you to my family and my friends and department heads to the... Whoops. Oh, oh, wow. See, this is why... I was just going to thank our city clerk, and this is why. She never lets you mess up, and certainly we don't want that to fall off. Thank you to our city clerk Sony and your staff and everyone that makes really the city hum. And to Jamelle Waze... I don't... Jamelle, there you are. Our administrative assistant and office manager in the council office. Thank you for being the glue and putting up with seven very harried people every Monday that you don't see anytime the rest of the week. And then we come in like the Keystone Cops. And no offense to our investigator, Parker. You're not a Keystone Cop at all. Thanks for keeping us safe during our meetings while you're doing... Chief Ewens is here. Thank you, chief. And all the directors that have taught me so much. And here I go on like it's the Emmy Awards. So nonetheless, there are so many to thank. Thank you to my colleagues. Keep up the great work. Lincoln is a great place to live and work, and I know you're going to do a stellar job from here on out. And just thank you, everyone. It's a great place to live and work. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you like to continue us on?
I'll be reading item 1B and 1C together. This is expressing our appreciation of Richard McGinnis for his service as well as Michelle Suarez for her service for the city as a member of the city council. We did awarded them with their appreciations last week. Unfortunately, this week they won't be with us, but at least we are wanting to recognize as a community, thank you for their service.
Madam Clerk, if I may, I know our newly elected city council members and our reelected city council member have some guests here today. And I just wanted to give the opportunity, if you wanted to say any words, you're more than welcome to do so at this time as a thanks to the folks that are out here in the audience today who have helped us all along the way. Just wanted to give that opportunity if you wanted to say thank you.
To acknowledge your family? Yeah. I would like to acknowledge my mother, Vida Ann Bowers, who's right behind our mayor, for coming on out. And then next to her is Millie Small, a dear friend, talented friend of mine, and I wouldn't be here without her.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Carlson, would you like to go?
I have a good row of family here. Thank you. My wife Liz, my oldest daughter Britta, my middle child Anika, and my son Preston are here. My parents, Dennis and Nancy Carlson, are also here. And also my in-laws, Ken and Colleen Ring. Thanks for being here and thank you for all your support.
Councilman Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will do my best job to be brief. I have a lot of family here, and I feel so fortunate. I have my sister Lexi Weber, my Aunt Shell, my cousin Emerson and her boyfriend Dylan, my cousin Jaden, my Uncle Justin, and my Aunt Whitney, and my cousins Ruger, Jessa, and Kinsley, my brother Dylan, his girlfriend Abby, my Aunt Jeannie, my Aunt Linda, my Grandma Barb, my Grandpa Dwayne, my Uncle Dave, my mom Lori, and my dad Darren. And I consider him part of the family Larry Carr. And we also have my grandma Ivy back there. I'm sure I might be missing a few. But, you know, as a 25-year-old, I wouldn't have this opportunity without the support I've had from my family. So, you know, I feel extremely blessed and so lucky to have them here with me today. So thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Chair.
My family was here in the third row, but some of them, they're probably out there eating the cake already. I have some friends here, some good friends from the Republican Party that helped and supported me during my campaign are here. Mary Hilton is here, and Fan Sean Blythe is here. Also like to recognize Don Wesley, a good friend who I've known for many, many years, is here. Robert Downey from the Main Society was here. He departed as well. He's probably eating cake as well. But Bill Zussman, I see Kathy and him in the back of the room. And so I appreciate some of my supporters that showed up here today for this little ceremony. Got to recognize Ken Ring, who used to be my dad's boss from State Farm. And I kind of wish my parents were here, but they're not. They're gone. So but really looking forward to serving the Southeast District too and doing the best I can for the city of Lincoln as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all of those guests and family members that came out today. Public service requires a lot of the folks sitting up here, and we surely cannot do it without the support of our friends and family. So thank you all for coming out today. Madam Clerk, would you like to move us forward, please?
Okay. That concludes our consent portion of our agenda. Section two is our resolutions' first readings, our items 2A through 2E. Our ordinances' first readings are items 3A through 3F. Our pending list is section four, items 4A through 4D.
Very good. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Duden. Madam Clerk?
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
We are adjourned.